I'd like to call this workshop to order. Here's the process we're going to use. We have had some people weigh in on comments. We are going to, since they are in writing and we have been giving them previously, we are going to weigh in on those comments as we go through this ordinance. And we're gonna start at the top. I had to put this on the computer and make it larger so I could read it. The comments. So, oh, here comes Leslie. That's okay, we're just getting started. So I thought if I started and spoke slowly, you'd make it here. So, we started this at the council meeting and realized that we were probably going to need some more time to think it through a little bit. So, we're gonna start on the first page. I don't think really that there's anything on the first page. We just have to keep in mind, the purpose of the MXD zone is to be flexible. We needed a flexible zone. We felt that when we started this process, which has been a few years, when we started this process, we envisioned the MXD being a more fluid zone, a zone that would, that was kind of up and coming and that we could see would be able to help us in a lot of different ways. So there's not really anything on the first page. The second page.
Which one are you working off?
I'm working off of...
Twenty twenty dash four.
Twenty, oh, I'm working off, sorry. I'm working off of, yeah, sorry. I'm working off 2020 dash one. The comments are on another, are on the 2017 dash nine, but I'm working off the 2020 dash one.
Got it.
Okay.
So again, I'm sorry about that. Is both the two drafts of the 2017 dash nine, one has Victor's comments from VMK, and of course Carl Munder's comments is K1's through whatever. Yep.
So when we get, I'm sorry, when we get to those sections, we can refer to 2017 dash nine of the draft so we can see if there are any comments. I will mention that on page two of thirteen, at the bottom, 98 dash 23, required open space recreation areas to be dedicated. And it says here, editors note, this section may need to change if ordinance, it should say 2019 dash 12 is enacted. 2019 dash 12 was enacted Monday night. They did vote on it and do you have, remember?
With amendments, with amendments.
With amendments.
So, the additional language to 98 dash 23 added by virtue of passing ordinance 2019 dash 12 follows kind of the middle where it says, "Commercial zones comma," and the additional language was, "And any development with a residential component located in the downtown zone per NDTZ Imprint in accordance with the requirements set forth in this code applicable thereto comma except."
Okay.
So there is some changed language, but it really doesn't...
No.
Doesn't really pertain this. So I think if we go to three of thirteen, it's gonna start at the bottom where the, we were discussing the open space required for, the densities required for the open spaces. We've talked about that.
Right.
On Monday night.
So I will say that the comments on 20 dash 16 about the downtown location, these don't necessarily aren't applicable to the downtown zone. What we're looking at is applicable to mixed use everywhere else. That was one of the comments I was saying. This basically prevents, because of the mass in the downtown and how they're located would be impossible for the downtown, downtown to apply, be able to meet these percentages. These percentages are not in the downtown zone and also Monday night with amendments, 2019 dash 12 was also passed. Their amendment was, we had said zero, that the entire downtown was exempt. The town council amended that to say any lot 15,000 square feet and over.
Under.
Would not be exempt, would be applicable, I'm sorry, would be applicable for open space.
15,000 feet or less is exempt.
Yep.
In any zone.
No, this is just the downtown zone.
This was dealing with what we voted, what we recommend.
So crowded, the parcels are so small.
Okay, so we have that.
I'm sorry, I said fifteen.
This doesn't apply to the downtown zone, so I think that's...
Right, thank you. But I just wanted to clarify that for some, because there was some confusion. So, this is talking about the open space requirements in the, in the mixed use. The text amendment, any other place.
The text amendment was repealed.
The MX, the MXCC was repealed?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I was, I was...
The other one was repealed.
My bad.
So, we talk about the different zones, and we have here the MXD, we have a 10% open space required. Leslie, do you want to talk on that?
Sure, why not? So, I'm sure I have it in front of me, but I was looking online at Victor's comments just recently, this afternoon. And so, I understand in a way what he's talking about, but on the other hand, and also going back to our discussion last week whether it should be, the percentage should just go to the residential portion. All right, let me just back up. So, let me ask you a question. Is presuming MXD is 10%, then that's a different, completely different standard than the three acres per 100, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, good, that's what I thought. So when we were talking about whether it should be 10% across the board or 10% just for residential, as I was sort of recommending, I looked at that again, and the thing is, is that what that does is it encourages more commercial, because if you have a seven, like, let's say you have 200 acres, 75% is residential, then you're gonna have to have, what is that, 15 acres? Open space? And whereas if you had, you know, and you'd have zero open space for the 25% commercial. So whereas if you had 50% residential, you'd only have to have 10, right? 10, right, yeah, whatever. It's like half, half times 10%. Yeah. So, so there is part of that is, does make sense in terms of us wanting to encourage commercial, because the more commercial, the less open space. The other thing, and you know, I know like Victor's saying, well, this is all supposed to generate this, I forget the term, urban, sort of denser, denser, right? But we're not, but we're not doing, this is not doing the open space per how many units, it's doing it per the percentage of land, or the percentage of residential. And also, if, if open space doesn't apply to, to mixed use, then you're sort of getting an advantage, because under certain circumstances, the planning commission can say, well, you can just pay a fee in lieu of doing the open space. So if you completely don't have to do it, you're getting an advantage that say a developer's doing just residential isn't gonna get. So I'm just, like, I don't see why the, the open space should be eliminated from the residential portion of the mixed use. I guess that's my, my point.
You mean separated? You mean the commercial?
I don't think that open space should be eliminated, like Victor is proposing, from the mixed use, from this zoning ordinance that we are considering right now.
I agree.
I mean, he's saying, you know, there's a park and, you know, why do we need to do open space and blah, blah, blah. Now, not every mixed use, you know, development is gonna have a park next to it, but...
Right, and I kind of, I guess I read his comments a little differently in the fact that actually that park gets, that's in the downtown zone, so we're not even talking about that in this, in this ordinance.
Hey, what's, what are you talking about? Watkins Park is the park that borders the Beck property. Is that in the downtown?
True, but he said, this town, this is a town that already has a giant park directly located off Center Street. Okay, he's talking about park, I'm sorry. I'm thinking, I'm thinking downtown, I'm sorry. I get, listen, when you start looking at all three of these things, you start looking at it.
I could do it.
No, I agree, I tend to agree. I have a problem with the overall 10%, but, and also, it's talking about base density, but then you talk about the net developable acreage. What is in the net developable acreage?
Everything but stormwater management, your roads and people that don't...
And that's what the percentage is applied to, not the whole...
It's the same definition that applies to subdivisions. It's, that definition is not new.
Right.
Okay, I, I want to make a comment. Big picture, because we have a landlocked downtown, and we want to support downtown revitalization and economic development, what we realized is we were updating the last master plan cycle, which finalized after three, four years in 2013, we realized what made the most sense was to look at our remaining infill areas where we already had a significant amount of infrastructure in place, and look at most appropriate ways to develop them, as opposed to, unless there was a compelling reason to do annexations and so forth. An OPE is a, is a separate possibility in that regard. And as a result of the downtown being landlocked and the way it developed, and the vast majority of the parcels being so small, we ultimately decided it didn't make sense to impose after the fact, you know, restrictive open space requirements on that. So, the opportunity of looking at MXD, which we realized did make sense because it was a complement to our downtown area, if we did it right, and we did it in balance in terms of residential and commercial slash retail, okay? But we didn't know what the scope and scale of that should be, and that was primarily the reason that we advocated for a downtown vision plan project. And it gave us a lot of insight in the charade process, and so the opportunity of visualizing it and so forth. We still don't know the specifics of what it's gonna take or the best balance of residential and retail slash commercial. But you've got a lot of acreage to work with that you don't have downtown. So what we get to do is look at the very, very important value of open space and the other criteria on a much larger palette, whether we're talking about the Beck property surrounding Center Street, are we talking about the other side of 27? We've got a lot more acreage to work with, so it's a larger canvas. I think that's the bigger picture. I think we can nitpick, and we can try to, you know, split zeros and ones and so forth, but the bigger picture of what this is going to deliver in terms of additional developmental opportunity, but in harmony with what we already have downtown, that's the bigger opportunity. That's what we're looking at. We don't have sufficient parcel size downtown for open space to be something that, that's practical to implement. We will have it in terms of the infill areas.
So are you in support?
I know what you're...
Yeah, you're in support of the 10%?
What I just said. That's, that's the big picture. We don't need to nitpick. We spent two to three years developing...
So what's your conclusion on this, what's in the proposed ordinance?
10% for the mixed use, okay.
Yeah, I think in terms of the overall acreage, you've got enough to work with.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on then.
So I actually have kind of a clarification, because I was also, I was looking at the open space ordinance that I have somewhere here. And it's, it indicate, I mean, it seems to me I could be wrong, but it seems to me that you could be, some of these pathways could be considered open space. I mean, not just little sidewalks, but you know, things that connect green space, like you could have a little area. And of course, we, with this whole MXD, we want to encourage pathways and walking and biking and alternative to vehicles. So, is that, is that true or not, that sort of pathways can be considered open space? And I don't mean the roads or the, or the ingress or the egress. I see the, I see things that are not included as open space.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they certainly can be. In fact, I think the code reads that it's encouraged to have more than half of it unimproved.
Yeah, well, half of it's supposed to be green space, right? Yeah. Right. But the other half could be a pathway to Watkins Park, or a pathway to, you know, and that could...
Could be a passive or active recreation area.
Yeah, so I just don't see, I guess, the huge backlash against requiring the, the open space.
So we'll move on to 98 dash 60 Townhouse Development, Section A. Any comments about that one? It's not even, I don't, I mean, it's not in the draft. I don't...
I mean, this is a clarification on townhouses, but it doesn't apply...
It doesn't apply.
To the mixed use.
Correct, but unless you specifically exempt mixed use from 98 dash 60, then it will apply. And so the reason we have this section in here, which is existing code, so that we can specifically exempt MXD and make it subject to 98 dash 61 instead, which was initially enacted, if you recall, as a part of the MXUCC special exception. And so then the changes to 98 dash 61 is to essentially add MXD, you literally add the words "add MXD" and tacking it on to MXUCC. So that's why we have this.
Okay, that's why, okay.
Incredible.
All right, so we go on to 98 dash 61. Mixed use development within CC district, that's MXUCC, and mixed use district developments. First purpose and scope. And then we're going into, the next section is the pattern book.
This is very thorough, I like this a lot.
One of the comments was why we needed an analysis for the proposed, proposed uses. And it's true, if somebody's gonna develop something, they're not gonna develop something that's not gonna, that isn't going to be designed in the market, because then no one will go there or buy in the area or want to have a commercial, some kind of a retail store there. So, and we kind of already have a market, well, not for anyplace else, but...
Well, I think the one, the one thing, when you recall back when we were doing this, while you weren't on the commission, but we were doing this a few years ago, and so it's market analysis, certainly the developer's gonna do their market analysis, but there's some, there's, sometimes there's been a dispute over whether we need really large retail as opposed to smaller. So like, you know, apparently there's smaller Targets and smaller, you know, maybe not smaller Trader Joe's, because they are small. But, so I think that that's for our benefit, not for the developer's benefit, so that we, you know, that we can get a more objective market analysis that we can consider, not what, not just what they think is good for them to develop. So I guess that's why I would...
So essentially, instead of the developer doing that market analysis, it actually ought to be done through staff in here.
Yeah, I don't know if they have the expertise and money, but I mean, I don't know how it could, should be worked out, but I, I don't think it should be eliminated.
No, but I don't think the developer should give it to us either, because it might be skewed a little bit, but...
I mean, they can comment.
Just what's contained in the pattern book, so this is...
Yeah.
That the developers to share.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
So it could be something just simple, doesn't have to be elaborate, just a paragraph.
It's the introduction, I read this as sort of an executive summary.
Okay, okay. All right.
Should we change it to say executive summary?
It was the existing code, so this was actually already in the code, it wasn't enacted again at MXUCC time, which was self-borrowed from the draft in the MXD at the time, which didn't go anywhere at the time. And certainly you can recommend changing it to the town council, certainly.
And I think we, D should say proposed recreational and existing recreational areas within the adjacent residential areas. That's a suggestion, I don't know if we should put it in there or not, under D.
Well, what's your interpretation of why it would, why it should go in? Are you understanding?
Well, I think it's part of the site plan, I mean, it's adjacent to it, we should see what's adjacent to the, what they're putting, the proposed recreational areas and existing recreational areas that are in there, just for information purposes.
I mean, it's fine, for information purposes.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with you including it.
Yeah, yeah, for information.
For information.
Okay, so we go to five of thirteen. This talks about the setback requirements.
I mean, Victor's comment is similar to, I think, things he says elsewhere about the pattern book should dictate. You know, and I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with that as long as, and later as we'll move on, it'll be like whether we should have non-permitted uses as opposed to listing all the permitted uses. And, you know, I don't have a problem as long as there is clarity about the, the planning commission's role and, and objective criteria that, you know, within the, the pattern book, so that we can't be accused of making arbitrary decisions or subjective decisions going from one development to another.
Okay.
Because he mentions that down here again in the signage plan.
What page are you on?
Four of thirteen.
Four.
Four of...
Oh, sorry. I, I, oh, yeah, I have the ordinance.
Okay.
I was, I was reading his online, so I wrote on the ordinance.
Right, okay.
And now I have, because I don't have a color printer right now.
So, these are the things that the introduction should contain, and he, and I think later on in the, in this ordinance, it does go through the uses. Maybe not.
You know, I'm just talking about the whole, like, whether, whether some of this detail should be...
Included in the...
Well, it should be moved to the pattern book. That's, that's what he's been recommending, is that we don't have, that we not be micromanaging through this ordinance, but instead that this should all be dictated through the pattern book.
Yes.
Right, and that's where I'm saying, as long as we have clear demarcations of what, you know, of the, of our, our role and our authority in terms of the, the pattern book.
Okay.
So that we can make objective decisions.
I thought that was the rationale for the way the, the pattern book contents are enumerated.
I know, I'm just speaking to like his comments that he's made, like, throughout.
But I do agree, you know, I, I agree with you, Leslie. I don't know where we should put that in there. Is that, I mean, Tom, the explanation of part of B, the pattern book, it, it does say that we're gonna, the commission with the pattern book will address the site planning, architectural and signage requirements. Once approved by the commission, the pattern book shall govern the development. So is that, does that give us enough of what we want to do? Because we're gonna approve the pattern book, we might ask for changes in the pattern Does that give us enough?
I don't know what you mean by enough, there's a subjective component to that that really isn't legal.
Does that give us enough of a legal? Leslie, say what you were saying again, that we had the...
Well, you know, okay, so we don't, he doesn't want us to micromanage, like, the setbacks and whatever in this whole ordinance, because it might be particular to, you know, it might be appropriate for a particular property, not others. So if, if it's in X property and we don't agree, then we need something in here that says, you know, that we, the planning commission, have the, the right or whatever to, to alter it. But we need, but it seems like there's, needs to be some sort of, something we're basing that on as well, you know? And that's, I think, where it, where it is now, it's referring back to different parts of the code.
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, the concern that I typically would have would be, you make one decision in one case, completely different decision in another case for no reason other than that the membership here is changed, for no reason, then looks good here but not there.
Yeah.
So I always try and envision myself defending that on appeal to circuit court. I'm probably not that comfortable telling a judge, well, it looked good here, it looked good there, the membership change, and, yes, I think that certainly you have some measure of, of discretion. Typically, if you're talking about things like setbacks, the traditional way is to provide setbacks, but then allow variances. I mean, not variances in the sense necessarily of a Board of Appeals variance, but what we, what's sometimes called a variation to the subdivision or the development regulations. but what we, what's sometimes called a variation to the subdivision or the development regulations, which, so we have some examples, they're not probably perfect in this case because they're probably not as flexible as you'd want. But, you know, there are a couple of provisions, for instance, I think in ninety-eight, chapter ninety-eight, for varying some of these requirements based on hardship or some, you know, showing of, I don't know, the uniqueness of the
Property.
constiuration or something along those lines, so there are some of those types of provisions. It's typically how they're handled, but, you know, that, those types of provisions may be too high a standard where you're trying to be flexible. So, you know, I guess my line is, is yeah, like, I would prefer a standard, but of some sort that guides at least, you know, what the planning commission's gonna do from case to case.
So Victor, as you can see, while we appreciate your input, we, we need something more than the amount of flexibility that you probably want, and I know you're not speaking right now, but probably, you know, later you can...
But you can use the other, the other ordinance, the hardship possibly to...
Well, we would have to decide.
We would have to decide that, but, you know. We do have, on the next page, on five of thirteen M, it talks about the front yard setbacks within the priority areas that should be similar to the downtown zone. And then there's a note, probably belongs in section one twelve thirty-seven point two K. Also need to determine if we want this section to apply to MXUCC.
I'm mixed on this whole thing because there's part of me that says, there's all this ability to be very creative in, under architectural design and all of these other things that you're, we can like it this way and one, you know, the planning commission this year likes this, it doesn't like it next year. And then to, personally, I want to see wide sidewalks, so I like this idea, I'm not, I like the thought of what that would look like, but to nitpick on that one thing versus, you know, public spaces, hardscape, all of that is completely open to the developer to put into the plan, and so I hear what you're saying and defending it, but there's a lot that is going to be up to the planning commission on whether they like the, you know, to give feedback on, you know. So I, I don't know if I'm as tied to keeping that in there, I understand why, I just, I'm not sure that I, looking at everything else, I mean, I'm looking at site finishings, all of those things could change the whole look, and we're not dictating any of that, so to be, and I want wide sidewalks, but that, you know, that's me today here, somebody could replace me and say, no, I want skinny sidewalks.
That just makes sense, strollers, Labradors, toddler, you know, white sidewalks make sense, you can't, you know.
But, you know, thirty years ago, nobody wanted wide sidewalks, they all wanted skinny sidewalks, you know, so, and that's what was out there, so, you know.
Has there ever been anything in the town, like, I look at the buildings around the town and I see, okay, this looks like this, this looks like that, is there anybody who's ever agreed on specifically for this downtown section to say it should look like this time period?
We, you have a design guideline.
There are design guidelines, they're not a time period, but there are design guidelines specifically for the downtown zone.
Right, but never actually, like, we have a rich history in this town, but we've never said specifically that this should be Mansard roof or this should be, so, so every, we could take every proposal on a case-by-case basis and look at some of these tinier properties differently than we look at some of the bigger properties?
Well, keep in mind, this is the general overall mixed use and not specifically downtown. Are you saying you want the mixed use?
Not downtown.
Huh, not downtown, yeah.
It's just mixed use.
Yes.
Just wondering if we should...
Well, I think that's where the architectural style and overall design principles come in, when they, when they bring them to us. I think that, but like you said, it'll be up to...
I think part of the, where this started, I mean, because we've been working on this for years now, is it really started with, we wanted people to have the creativity to come and bring something that isn't just, you know, here's a fit within this box.
Right.
We wanted people to say, okay, come up with some ideas and let's come up with this, or we're calling this book.
Pattern book.
Pattern book, pattern book, and, and show it to us and, and so people can get creative, take into account where the, the site is and maybe the landscaping and all of that kind of stuff to really be able to do what they need to do, which is why I think, I'm not sure, I hear what you're saying, but...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we will have to change, we'll have to create language, it's not just we're gonna pull this out, you know, we'd have to
Sure.
rewrite parts of it and put other standards elsewhere if we were gonna pull that out. And of course, with the ADA, you probably need wide sidewalks.
Right, you're gonna have to go to ADA standards anyway, so...
Yeah, it's pretty rigid.
Yep.
Well, it's got...
Okay, so...
Not on standards.
The part, the part that is underlined is what was put in, what is put in by the council, Tom?
Actually, this one, staff recommended this.
Okay.
But it's the changes, yeah.
Okay.
Double underline would be new language.
Alrighty, yes, I knew that, but... Okay, let's go on to six of thirteen. I think the...
Let's simply continuity with downtown.
All right, I think if you look, I think the, the most evaluation or discussion needs to be done on the approval process. It talks about a two-step process of a concept plan and a final site plan in accordance with article eight. A development in the MXD shall follow the three-step approval process, concept plan, a preliminary plan and final site plan or a final subdivision plan. That was put in by the staff. In addition, the planning commission may require a charrette or a special work session to facilitate collaboration on the conceptual design and layout.
Steph, can you explain why you want a preliminary site plan added into that process?
I can, I'll explain where that comes from, so when the MXD was originally in draft form, several years ago, it contained a three-step process. When Mr. Scranton prepared a text amendment to create the MXUCC, he drafted it as a two-step process.
Okay.
Thinking that, at least as to his properties, the, I think, the MXUCC properties that he might develop would mostly be, if not exclusively, be site plans. Site plans have a two-step process, concept and final, they don't have the preliminary. Large subdivision plans have the preliminary. So, I think this is here just as simply because it was in the MXD, but I also want to call the attention of the fact that what you have in the code relating to MXUCC, which was there by text amendment, only calls for a two-step process. So, really, you and ultimately town council need to decide what you want to do with MXD. Do you want a two-step process? The argument Mr. Scranton made also with the MXUCC is you've got this whole layer of pattern book.
Yep.
And you've got that, so why do you need a three-step process when the pattern book is, is a process that is a jacked-up, you know, sort of concept review in the first place?
Well, it's, in this document, the pattern book is part of the preliminary, isn't it? I saw that somewhere.
It's in the concept.
I thought that...
Maybe you're right, can't remember.
As part of the site plan phase.
Part, as part of the site plan, blah, blah, blah. Okay, part of the, okay, part of the, part of the site plan phase.
But I do agree, I think...
I wonder if there's some, somewhere else I saw it, that's just...
It's, it's kind of repetitive, I think it ought to be too.
And I'm just, just trying to understand.
I'm sure it's a legal question, really, to be honest, I tried to stay in the legal lane, but you've got a pattern book, pretty intense, I would say, review at that stage. I'm not sure you, you need a third step, you know, this middle step of preliminary, but that's, I don't know, that's Mr. Thompson, maybe.
Nope.
Not yet, we...
I guess, I guess if a question is directed to him, he gets...
Maybe.
We can actually hear you during the recording?
I just have a comment on this moment.
I have always envisioned this, that you have a pattern book and overall program, development program phase, in which you are working with the planning commission to develop what it's going to be overall. And then once that's approved by the planning commission, then you step back into the various phases going through whatever the town program is, whether it's concept design or preliminary design, if there's a subdivision type, or, and into final design. What I am concerned about is that when we keep throwing out the word concept design, in today, that's almost, stormwater management almost has to be fifty, nine, almost has to be seventy-five percent complete to get to storm, to get to concept design, so I think that my interpretation has always been that you want to kind of know what's going to go on the property in terms of a program. You know, your pattern book, whether it's sidewalks and the areas and what you think your open space is going to be. And then you get into the, once that planning commission and the developer come to an agreement and the pattern book is approved, which the program, the development program is approved for the property, then you start carving out individual sites or individual development or individual roadways in the preliminary design or subdivision process that then follows what the town code is.
Okay, so that sounds to me like you're saying that the pattern book is not, is before the site plan phase?
Yes.
Correct.
That's what I'm taking it as.
I believe, so I, to me, you want to know,
Right.
we'll take the back property because that's really what you're focusing on. You want to know what the overall plan is going to be for the property, how does everything fit together?
Right.
That's program development.
Right.
Or, or the development program for it, and then, and it's, I hate to use the word sketch, sketches, but we kind of know, here's where our sidewalks are, here's where we think the amount of open space, and it's not utility design, it is not stormwater management design, although we may have a little bit of an idea. And then it may be, okay, well, site, site plan is, all right, we're gonna take this section of the property and that's going to be our first site, that's the site plan moving forward.
Right.
Being carved out, and that comes out of the phasing within the pattern book.
So we want pattern book slash plan development?
Yeah.
And then site development, and then what?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think when we were talking before, when, way back when, this was the pattern book kind of, and we would meet almost in a workshop or with the developer to go over that pattern book, and then they could proceed to the next step.
Right.
So that they wouldn't have to keep coming back.
And wasn't that where this charrette thing that now appears to be last?
Yes, yes.
Was that part of, that was part of the beginning?
Absolutely.
Which we got from Rob Scranton, that's where that came from, but it was part of the beginning stage, not the end.
And I think that's the way it should be, I think the planning, the pattern book and the charrette or the work session should be the first thing that happens.
Right.
So I don't know how we want to word that. Yes.
Preliminary one and a final site plan.
Do you want to consider substituting pattern book slash development plan for preliminary plan?
That would should, that would to be place concept.
Well, and concept could go to then preliminary, and then you have a preliminary final, so it's still a three-step process?
Yep.
Or, what do you think, Tom?
I mean, the problem is terminology, I'd be hesitant to use the same terms twice, meaning different things.
Right, we want to...
So, you know, or we could come up with something that says that, it would probably require a change to what's currently in the code, but what's said, you know, sort of makes sense to me.
Because it is true, we don't want them to have to keep going back to the architect to make, to draw up new plans, to spend more money, that's why we asked for the pattern book and the meeting first. So, we're gonna leave that in your hands, Tom, because you're gonna make the changes, so that we can get through that. Does any, anybody else have, that whole section is probably gonna... Because it says, "An applicant shall submit all concept, preliminary, effectable and final plans to the planning commission for consideration."
I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to take a look at this whole, you know, because we also, just above that approval process, we have, "The pattern book shall be evaluated based on the purpose and objectives of this use," so we have this circular thing going.
Exactly.
So if we're gonna have more decision criteria, whatever, in the pattern book, then that's not really gonna make sense either anymore. I don't think.
But you understand where we're, where we're going, Tom, to redo this, so that whole section D is gonna be kind of reworked?
Somebody sounds like a fourth process in a way.
No.
Sorry. Final subdivision plan really doesn't come back to this body, so it's a two-step process anyways, I'm not sure why. The approval process in the original draft said it was three anyway, but...
Yeah, should...
Maybe that was, maybe I wrote, I don't know, I'll use later, but, yeah, I'll, I'll work on revamping this, sure.
Okay, so should we go on to seven of thirteen? "The commission may approve or disapprove the final plan, including the pattern book after a public hearing."
All right, well, that's interesting. Does that mean that it, now, now that it's all gonna be in the beginning, does that mean, are we supposed to have a public hearing on the?
On the pattern book?
On the pattern book?
That's, that's the way it's written, at least as I read it, I don't know.
I don't know, you know...
Hearing separate from your normal public meetings, I mean, most people...
Yeah, as long as people can
Right, yeah.
Their open meetings, so...
They're probably talking about a charrette at that point, right, I mean, a public meeting, I think that's when they're talking about that.
Yeah, so as opposed to a hearing, yeah, but certainly...
That's a familiar, familiarization process.
Yeah, yeah. So it's...
Don't think we need that.
Okay, then five just has a... Okay, then, five just has amendments to the concept. If applicable, preliminary, prelim, sorry, preliminary plans must be approved by the planning commission in the following instances. And I think this kind of goes to what you were saying about having some teeth in the game.
Yeah, well, but this is stuff that, that is changed after we've approved it once, right? Amendments to concepts.
Yeah.
Were applicable.
Yes.
Or if applicable, preliminary. Of course, we got to get all our terms situated.
Exactly. B has the increases in the height of a building structure by ten feet or more, providing the increase does not exceed the building height set forth.
Well, these are all things that we would need to approve if they changed from...
If they changed it.
If they've changed from the original, whatever we're calling it, that we've approved.
Right.
Pattern book, maybe, or whatever. I mean, I, I would, I would just think that whatever the, the current state of the law is, like, if something's changed, I mean, I know, I, like, how is it normally? When we do, you approve subdivision, if somebody's going to change it, they need to come back, right?
If they don't necessarily come back here, it could go for staff to review.
Well, this was saying, this is saying...
This is saying we, it, we has to be approved by the commission, planning commission. But something, for instance, if it's a simple, like, the roof, the style of the roof or the type of shingles you're going to use, and that changes, why does that have to come back to us? Why can't the staff?
That gives you the power, I mean, unless you relinquish the power of those decisions to staff, at a staff level.
Well, this actually wasn't saying that. This didn't include something that was that minute. Well, a change of, a change in use. It's a change in use.
Not what's being used, right.
Right. Not a change in roof tiles. So that's, yeah. Well, the question is whether we need to spell, again, spell these things out in detail or whether we can have...
I feel like everything's going to go through staff.
Through staff and, and, yeah.
So things like, when it talks about things that materially alter something.
Then it would come.
Well, but staff would determine whether that is significant enough or not to come back to...
That's the dividing line.
All right, and is that good for...
Is the recommendation going to be to strike? Subsection five, in other words?
No. Well, a change, well, you can't, a change in use definitely has to come to us. Increases in the height of a building structure by ten feet or more, provided the increase does not exceed the building height set forth. I, if it's within the height, building, if it's in the code of the building height, but they're changing it, why would they?
You got to think, I guess, of a situation where, I don't know, that we, that we had, say, approved a pattern book where there was a specific height, and it was because there was something else that...
Affected that height.
...in with it well, and so then if it's going to be changed, maybe initially we would not have approved that different height, for whatever reason, you know? So you don't really know...
Okay.
Until, you know, you know, until it's presented to you. And if there's a reason that it needs to change, and it's just like some whatever, then we would probably approve it. Like, if it was...
Right.
...reasonable.
Okay. No, we don't want to strike it, but... And the, the section six is just wording in the correct appendixes to the chapter, right?
Here at the beginning of M X D, it probably makes sense for us to monitor it, starting out at least.
Yeah, well, that's...
I'm sorry.
I think here at the beginning of M X D, you know, finalize this and roll it out, it probably does make sense for us to monitor it and get, and get familiar with examples of it and variety of...
I think it's time about number five.
So that's just the amendments to the concept plan? Is that what you're saying?
But are we calling it concept? So, yeah, good.
I think this is trying to define, I guess, what material means when there's a change.
Yeah, that's really what it's about.
Final or, if applicable, preliminary and final. I think there's a provision in our code that says something to the effect of, that if it's a minor change, then staff may approve it if it's a material change, but there's not much that really tells us what, what all that means. And I, if, what I take this to be is trying to define more specifically those circumstances to change from preliminary or concept to final needs to come back here for approval versus what the staff can just approve on, so...
Okay. Okay. So, page seven of thirteen?
From the drafter, is that on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Eight of thirteen, I'm sorry. Well, I'm on the ordinance, the general ordinance, so we're back, we're, our favorite topic of conversation, drive-through services.
I think we've done that, right?
Yeah, we've...
Been through this one.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're leaving this, and the thing is, as we'll figure out once we get to the next section about whether we're pulling out or leaving in all the...
Right, exactly.
...preliminary, then, yeah.
But I think that's...
But we can just leave this.
Okay, so down at the bottom, the mixed-use district?
So Victor had a comment about the seasonal displays. That's G.
Okay.
And that we're micromanaging. So we could just say any displays rather than seasonal, because he said they're seasonal, for goodness sake. And I think that the, the gist of it is just that you don't keep a bunch of junk in the way that people trip over, so maybe that's just common sense.
This isn't just about getting it through the development process. This is about what happens after it's reused, so...
We can, I agree with that. Just strike it and just say displays.
Is operation.
We still have this as the same across every other ordinance.
Yeah, 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 because you don't want to, I mean, God's Safeway drives you crazy, you know, even just trying to get in the door.
Because we would draw that under the sign ordinance.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes.
I was going to mention, wouldn't that, wouldn't those displays have to go through the town for approval?
I would just strike seasonal and...
But let me ask this. If it's in the sign ordinance, do we need to even bring it up here?
That's what I'm wondering.
Well, Victor doesn't want the sign ordinance to apply, so we have to decide whether it does.
Maybe they're not signed, right?
Oh, yeah.
But what is the definition of seasonal?
It could be a display, you know, if it's a, if it's a florist shop there, they might want to have a display out, you know, out front of the florist or whatever the season is, so I think we need to have this in there. We're hoping that the people that...
Want it to be in the way.
Way.
Got it.
So how do we say that without micromanaging it?
There's a section on roads and sidewalks already in the code somewhere that talks about you can't block them or obstruct them or things like that.
Then why don't we just take it out?
Can't block? Well, we need, I mean, as long as everything, you know, applies.
It's from memory, I haven't...
Yeah, so we would just make sure...
Yeah, check and see if that's in there.
We can just put the, the, you know, this has to be current.
Yeah, current code.
Current, street and road, sidewalks, whatever.
Then the next section down is the purpose of the mixed-use district. Did Victor have a comment about that?
Yeah, this is, this is the T up for permitted, non-permitted uses.
Okay, next page, the objectives. All of this has been added.
I was, when I went back and looked at this, I was surprised that this occurred so late in the ordinance. It seems like it was...
This seems to be the introduction to me.
Well, isn't it because we do the subdivision section first?
Same parts of it are planning, says chapter ninety-eight.
Yeah.
And zoning stuff.
It's just, it's just that the zone is one twelve, so it's a later...
Chapters are alphabetical, if you will.
Yeah, okay. The one comment, and I kind of agree in this, on number six, B six, encouraged development of sites that promote and support a diverse artistic and cultural entertainment entity that creates a community. And he said to, to put in, if possible...
Well, it says encourage.
Encourage, I mean, encourage if possible.
It's aspirational.
Yeah.
Because he's right, they, the live-work spaces are not as successful as they should be.
If possible, this should only be included by those, I mean...
Okay.
Well, I mean, encourage isn't mandating anything, so I, I don't...
Okay.
I think that's redundant, but... I missed it, actually. I see it now.
And now we get into permitted uses.
Spend a lot of time on these.
Yep. Do you think we should do permitted uses or uses, or a list of prohibited uses?
When we started this, I think we'd started looking at it that way, and then we kept saying, "Well, what about this? And what about this?" And then we said, "Okay, what do we want?" And we came up with a list of what we want, instead of trying, because there was always going to be something that we might not be able to think about that we wouldn't want. That makes, isn't that...
Yes, and it's...
Combination of what we want and what we don't have.
Right.
That we'd love to see available.
But then we also note that the, that we, there are notes in here about, we say physical fitness facility, well, does that mean karate, educational fitness? I mean... It's so hard, and this town has been this way, where we have always listed the permitted, I mean, it's...
It is kind of, you know, excessive, but...
It is, but I don't know.
Just, I'm not saying I agree one way or the other, but I think some of the thought process that went into it is, there was this huge list, if I recall, at one point.
It was.
And we kept trying to say, "What don't we want?" And then we finally came back and said that people could put in for an exception, if there was something on here that, if there was something that wasn't on here, that they wanted to do, that they could still come in under an exception. Case by case basis. Or maybe I, I thought that's where we were at.
No, I think you're right. I think...
I think, I think, and we sort of touched on this last time, whether having these permitted uses makes something a permitted use of right, which diminishes our authority under the pattern book? So, because this is the ordinance, so if we're saying you can have any one of these things, and then we don't think something fits, you know, when they present with a pattern book in a particular land, use, whatever, then we have a problem because we have the use listed here. So for that reason, there's, there's a benefit to having the prohibited uses.
Yeah.
Then we have a lot more flexibility in approving what's in the pattern book. And comment on the Airbnb thing, and I'm not necessarily opposed of them, but there's so much around the country, some is discussion about how they shut out housing for people, just like regular, you know, they, they don't rent to somebody on a regular basis because they can have this rapid turnover, high, high income, you know, so just something to think about. And even though people don't think that they like tenants, long-term tenants tend to be better than...
Long-term tenants tend to be better.
Long tenants or two-week tenants. So anyway, just a thought on that.
There's a lot, there's a lot more legislation coming online in different areas with the Airbnbs, because they're finding they're not as...
Beneficial?
Beneficial.
There's the whole thing with the taxes and hotels being taxed and the Airbnbs weren't taxed, and I know that's probably changed in a lot of places, but, yeah.
It's one of the most frequently mentioned topics.
If we have that much Airbnb activity, we might have to consider a hotel.
Yeah.
Right. So, what do we think about, about keeping the permitted uses in or putting just in what's not permitted?
The one thing I would point out is we have a list of very specific retail uses, but then P says retail, sales and service, pretty general. So somehow, I don't know how that all fits. On the, the notion of a, a pattern book, you know, if there's a certain use that's not permitted, that's suggested in the pattern book, I'm going to defer to the development folks, but I would suspect they don't have specific uses. They may say there's a retail space, but I'm doubting that they're, at that moment, got, I mean...
Right, right.
A specific idea as to that it's going to be a coffee shop or a, well, it's good. Did I say something stupid or...
No, yes, well...
It's a deferral. That, that's the correct part, and that's part of why, when we show a concept book and the, the pattern book, the concept plan, there won't, it won't say karate shop and studio. We won't know any of that. It will say, you know, it won't say non-residential, but it will say retail area, restaurants, or, you know...
Right.
Whatever the definitions are for the generalities, and then as we fill the spaces, we'll go by whatever the permitted uses are for those areas.
Okay.
But for example, if there was a big block, a large block store, that may be a little more specific than an inline area that has, what, may just say general retail, something like that.
Of course, each one of, excuse me, of course, each one of those is going to come through as a site development plan.
Right.
Parcel.
Exactly.
Parcel's going to have to be reviewed anyway. It's not like you're generalizing the whole parcel and he's just get a blanket to go build whatever he wants.
No, right, no. The issue is more like what, what's controlling. The, the ordinance controls, so...
Right.
Do you want the ordinance to just say, "You can have any of this stuff," and then, "We're not sure we want it in a particular place," and then we have an issue?
Right.
As opposed to saying, listing the stuff we know that we won't approve anywhere? I don't...
Just, it'll be some time to put that one together.
I was going to say, I think...
I would think that that's been done somewhere.
I mean, we even have just another, I don't know. I mean, I, I will cer, I'm certainly willing to look at, you know, we have neighborhood professional, we have, we have, I mean, limited commercial, even though that still allows gas stations, I think. But, you know, we already have some things that are limiting more than commercial or something like that, so...
Are there ordinance written, I can't recall, written with what's allowed?
I don't know, but I'll look at them, or both, okay.
Both ways?
Yeah.
E T Z, where I'm sure a lot of this came from, is exhaustively, in this regard. Traditionally, well, at least since Ivan here, the way the town handles this typically is, is they like to list all of the specific permitted uses. They might list any particular zone, what's not permitted in a zone, and typically, when a good idea comes, it's added by text amendment to the ordinance, kind of like the one you saw recently with the restaurants in the I District.
Right, yeah.
So that's tip, traditionally how they've done it. I'm not saying that should be done here, but that's traditionally how it's been done.
And we have forty-five days still approximately to review this prior to going to the town council.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to look at the other ordinances to compare, but I guess if, if we wanted... we wanted to keep it like this, then I would want language that says, you know, that the pattern, like that the planning commission still reserves, that these, they're not necessarily all as of right, that we, but I, I just think it creates difficulties.
This way, the way it is.
Yeah, because it's also hard to say that, because then it's like, well, like you're telling us, we can do it, and now you're saying, well, maybe we might say you can't do it. So, I, I don't know, I just.
I think we need to kind of, let's put this back, go through it, and then.
I'll look at that, revisit, like, find it next week, over the weekend.
Yeah, make a note. If, if everything else is done, I mean, we can still discuss it at the.
At the meeting.
At the meeting, then we would still have 30 days, right?
You say, it looks like it's gonna go to, I'm sorry. It's gonna go to town council on the 6th of April, is my understanding. And so that, you know, again, we can discuss it then at the planning commission meeting for February. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, remember that the town council, when it gets it back, is not gonna have to set a public hearing. So, it's not like they get it back and just enact something.
Right.
So, even at the council, there's gonna be kind of this process, so.
I just want to make sure that they understand, because Judy was stating that there was gonna be a long process determining this. I just want to make sure that we know.
Right.
We're running, you know, close on time.
And you're gonna keep us, keep us informed of this time, so we don't go through. Okay, let's go on to D. I'm sorry, well, the, the next section was the residential uses. I don't, three was accessory uses. I think that's necessary to be in there. Number four is, the planning commission may consider uses that exceed 25,000 square feet, up to a maximum of 65,000 square feet of floor space per single use user. That's kind of vague.
That was a whole long conversation.
Oh, you know, because they took, because language was removed.
Yeah.
So, the, yeah, so before, it, it created standards by which we, the planning commission, would allow up to 65,000 square feet. So.
Was this a staff insert? Did the staff?
I don't think any of that changed from.
I have, hold on. I have, I have the last one. So, what, what changed was. So, maximum 25,000 square feet, or up to a maximum of 65,000 square feet as permitted by and under the conditions set forth in, oh, wait, no, that's not it. It's somewhere else it said. Oh, here it is. Planning commission may consider uses that exceed 25,000 square feet, up to a maximum of 65,000 square feet of floor space per single user, only upon the finding that the applicant has met the burden of proof that the use and relative scale of the building as proposed, more likely than not, A, meets or accomplishes the purposes, objectives, and minimum standards of the zone and other requirements of the town code, B will, will be, letter B, will be internally and externally compatible and harmonious with existing and planned land uses in MXD and adjacent areas, and C, existing and planned public facilities are adequate to service the proposed development contained in the plan. Oh, and D, the plan, if approved, would be in the public interest. Okay, so that could be excessive, but the thing is, is that the way it is now, there's zero criteria.
Right.
For us to make that decision, which is totally ridiculous. Talk about ridiculous. And as far as the, the 25,000, to begin with, we, as Victor probably remembers, had long debates about, about this, and that, and we, and it was a compromise for us to be willing to go up to the 65,000 square feet. So, you know, again, it's like, we're saying 20, and part of this, I know you all think, and I know especially your brother and I had a lot of discussion about this way back, but it's not like we're looking, I mean, part of this mixed use, and you remember, there's like all the harmonious stuff with your neighboring land use and properties? You know, we're not looking for the big box Walmart, we're looking for stuff that's smaller, but, you know, and not just cars driving in and parking in front of a big box store. So, you know, so, and I know we also went through, how big is X? Like, I can't remember now.
We had also.
What, it was, we ask about, was it Kmart?
No, I think he.
Walmart.
Walmart and Target were the ones that he used.
I mean, we had, we got all this information, and these were the numbers that we, you know, decided upon. And so, you know, I say stick with them, and then, and then maybe we don't put exactly back all that stuff I just read to you, but there has to be some criteria to go bigger, or else, how to, you know, again, like we've talked about before, we need objective criteria to make our decisions, to be consistent.
That's what I think.
I agree.
You know, the wording is may consider.
Say may consider. But how, what gives us, we have to, I think you have to have a criteria that allows us to consider.
No, the stuff that got taken out was our criteria that we had, that we were gonna use, and now, you know, it's gone, and so we have to figure out what criteria we want to put back in.
What starts, what did it say when it started, meet the burden of proof?
One said.
I don't have it with me, so.
It's like, meets or accomplishes, purposes, objectives, minimum standards of the zone and other requirements of the town code, that's kind of an obvious, I guess, will be internally and externally compatible and harmonious with existing and planned land uses in MXD and adjacent areas. So, that's kind of key. And existing and planned public facilities are adequate to service the proposed development contained in the plan. And a plan approved would be in the public interest. Now, that's, you know, usually something's in the public interest when it's for the public, and if this is a store, you know, it's really not in the public interest, no matter how big it is, it's for profit, so.
I think the, the two things that we're talking about, the, the second and the third thing that you talked about, I think we should put back in there.
Yeah.
Did you need her?
I guess the first one we can leave in, because it's kind of innoc, I mean, it doesn't hurt anything, because it's, I mean, it's kind of obvious, but it's sort of just a reminder of what we're trying to do, you know?
The, what she just read?
That's not gonna be in either one.
But this is, this is from.
Previous.
Previous, previous.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. It's. Yeah, okay, yeah. Anyway, okay. I mean, I can look at that again and see if we can, it's not like we're trying to create some extra hardship, but we also want to have some control over the process.
Okay, so we go on to D, special exceptions. There's three of them there. We do have the note about special standards in number two. What did, what did you have to?
So, if you're gonna have a special exception.
You have to have the standards for.
With any special exception comes the conditions under which the use is permitted, i.e., it's a conditional use or a special exception. And so, most of the special exceptions throughout our zoning ordinance refer back to section 112-62, for, you know, whatever the specific one is, it might say how big it's got to be, or how big it can be. You know, there, you know, there are conditions, if you flow through 112-62 F3, F, you kind of get a flavor for what's typically there, the, the conditions or specific standard, as we call them, what, what those are. But we don't have one for hotels.
Okay, so we need to work on that. Yeah, we don't.
We don't have any guidelines for hotels at all?
No. Never had a hotel in here. Never had a hotel in the town. Well. Hmm?
Yeah.
All right.
So, no bed and breakfast, is that what you're saying?
Bed and breakfast in there is a, yes. So, I think that's another thing we need to come back to and think about a little bit. We don't, I know our, our previous discussions, we're not gonna have like a grand hotel. I think we were only talking about two or three levels at the most.
We talked more about that, I think, when we were talking about.
About OPE.
OPE.
Yep. No, we did not. So, E is the minimum use percentage guidelines. Here's the following guidelines that we have that are in here. One is the land, required land use mix.
I have to say, I had to read that a couple of times over to get rather circular.
Yeah, it is.
It's the developer's responsibility to provide the rationale.
Right. Right, and that's the, A, says that they're gonna propose the ratio of the overall mix in the concept plan and the, show that, for the proposed non-residential and.
Yeah, it's reasonable.
Land mix.
Reasonable.
Yep. I don't have a problem with any of that.
So, this, but this would happen in the pattern book, though, right? Not the concept plan? About how the percentage, wouldn't that be right?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that go along with the market analysis?
Kind of, that's, but, I mean, the developer's gonna do their own, they're gonna know.
And there's a comment here, but I don't, this, this is not a change from what we did years ago, 25, 75%.
Yeah. Well, no, didn't we have stories, three stories, 40 feet?
Oh, I just meant the 25%, 75%.
Oh, okay. No, that's not a change.
And we finally agreed, yeah, that's, because I think we wanted 65%. We gave in to 75%. Yeah, I think somewhere it said in the, in the MXD commercial, it's 30, 40 feet or maximum of three stories.
Yeah.
I mean, that's fine with me, but is that?
Right, and I think that's what you're asking. It says 40 feet, but it doesn't say stories in the MXUCC.
Right.
Oh, wait, oh, wait, oh, this is, or the, so, so we, okay, so we still want it to be 40 feet, though. It's just that it can be three stories.
Right, maximum 40 feet in height, or.
Yeah, so, so it's not, it's not or, it's like, and, because or would mean we could do three feet, no matter how.
Maximum 40 feet or three stories.
And/or.
Or just leave it alone and just say 40 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Take out the maximum three stories and just do 40 feet.
But what did, what was that?
In the one in H, instead of saying exceeds 40 feet in height, or a maximum of three stories, just no structure shall exceed 40 feet in height.
Just like it is in the MXUCC.
Right, so is that the maximum height of the finished floor, or the top of the roof, or the mansard? Because, you know, you can, in 40 feet, you can get a four-story structure within 40 feet.
And I don't think.
I think that's why we said.
Was just making sure.
Tippy top of anything that's on top of the roof, or is that to?
The ceiling.
Is that the ceiling inside? Is that, you know, it's just max ceiling height, max floor height?
Right, and your building height, you, you can still build above, above that with your.
With your roof and the gables.
Let me see what the MX.
Like John says, we added that, and three stories for the reason of not.
Oh, you guys added it, okay.
But would you like, you would like it.
Yeah, they want to keep it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but it should be and, right?
That makes sense.
Not or, because.
I agree.
Okay, okay, all right.
Okay. I is off-street parking and loading.
Yep.
That's fine. J, location and layout requirements. It's 11 of 13, J, the bottom.
So, the, I might be going back a page, the off-street parking and loading.
That's I on 11 of 13.
Yeah, so, so the comment was that this would be, should be considered differently for MXD. That was Victor's comment. But I think it's just one of those things, again, that goes, we decide whether or not that's part of the pattern book, or we, whether we want to maintain those, you know, from, from where, from wherever that came from, out from section 112-7F. But, I'm sure he'll speak to that.
Okay, then, we're okay with J. And K? Moving on, L, development plans. That's. Consistent with.
New user change.
And then, section four, 112-62, were special exceptions. Once again, we have to have specific standards for our hotels.
Yep.
Did we just not include the definitions in this?
Which one?
So in the draft the draft from two thousand seventeen dash nine, there's, it goes on to have pages of definitions that are not in this.
After thirteen.
So it goes here, and then it goes on to definitions in the old draft, and in this draft, there is no definition.
I don't have, no, I don't have definitions in my name.
So this complements the special exception section on page eleven.
Oh, it's got the nursing home guidelines. That's building height.
There you go, well, definitions, next page, definitions, which is not in two thousand twenty.
Because those definitions were created with the M X U C C, right?
Oh, so we don't need to include them?
Okay.
Got it, that's all, I was just trying to make sure I wasn't missing pages or something.
Okay, so I think at this time, we're gonna take a real quick, short break, five-minute break. Do you need to? Does anybody need a break? Okay, so we just went through all this, but there's, we need to go back, we, there's two things we need to do. We need to set down specific standards for the hotel, correct?
If you want it to be a special exception.
Okay. Well, I think we need to, I think that's something, and then we need to go back to we need to go back and talk about how we're going to if we're going, or if we're gonna leave the permitted uses in or do the non-permitted uses. But I think what, so, what we wanted to do is, some of us wanted to review the other ordinances before we did that, so I would like to think a little bit about the hotel specifications as well. We can do one of two things, we can um we have until nine o'clock, but we don't have to use until nine o'clock. We can discuss these at the next meeting, correct?
Yeah.
We have time to do that.
Sure.
Okay. So that's kind of our homework, we'll look at that, then put this back on the agenda to discuss C, permitted uses, and I don't know which number that is. And um, under special exceptions, the specific standards for the hotel. Since, go ahead.
So what, what's our deadline? So we have our February?
We have February.
We have a February meeting, and then we can.
Your last meeting, that you're really gonna make.
Okay, so, so we have time, okay.
We used to have a work group between now and then too, if necessary.
Okay, and then you're gonna do your magic with those terms. I mean, I can send you whatever my notes say, I don't know that will be that helpful, I have like twenty sheets here. Anyway, okay, so that's good.
Okay, so since we do have time.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
If we're making changes on March the twenty, whatever it is, twenty-sixth or March thirtieth, I think, right? Is that enough time to get it, changes implemented to the town council members, or does that not? So if we're talking March thirtieth, I think is the last date, right?
I thought we would finish, make all of our changes at the next meeting.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that's what I'm playing, that's my plan.
I think that's great.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only those two things that we really need to discuss, so we should be able to um put those in there and, and vote on a recommendation, vote to send it to them. That gives them enough time.
Right, and gives us enough time to get.
To get them, yes. Can you have, can you have the corrections by what we've talked about?
Yeah, I'm sorry, when do you need those by?
To February meeting.
February meeting?
A week in advance of that.
Well. I mean, maybe like three day, maybe by, by the prior Thursday.
Nineteenth or twentieth, maybe?
Yeah.
The meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Yep, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so maybe by the nineteenth, which is the Wednesday before.
Oh, that's fine, if that's okay with everybody.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Well, I think currently our agenda is fairly light for February, so I think it might be a lot of it uh might be discussed on this, I'm not sure if we have a plan currently that's ready to be presented to you, so it'll work out well.
And then if there was anything he needed to change, um we could agree to let him change that and then we, he wouldn't need to, Tom wouldn't need to bring it back to us on the thirtieth, that way it, it could get to the council by the sixth.
Yeah, the, there's, there's a week, full week, from your last uh meeting actually to the next um town council meeting, and remember, all it's gonna happen on April sixth.
It's gonna be introduced.
Probably a reintroduction, probably, and the setting of a planning commission, I'm sorry, a setting of a public hearing. So, you know, it'd be up to the council president, you know, what he wants to entertain, you know, that kind of short turnaround, but I, I would imagine if you talk to him in advance, he'd probably be fine with that.
Right, even if we're, there was even subtle changes possibly, it could even hate to say move quicker, but.
Yeah, and remember, the, the
Still gotta set.
Probably gonna be changes at the town council.
Yes, that's true.
Take maybe a couple of meeting cycles or two or three, I don't know.
Leslie, do you think you'll have time to, because I think the thing that's gonna take the most time is if we start switching from what is permitted uses versus what is not.
Yeah.
And if we start switching that over for you to, I'll try to look up some stuff too, but any existing guidelines that say these are similar non-exempt uses or something like that, just 'cause I think that's gonna.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to do that by next week.
If we identified any nearby towns, municipalities that have an M X D ordinance.
We did, I thought we did, and.
And I'd like to look at, you know, a couple of mine, I, I think Frederick does for sure, but I don't know about Sykesville, I don't know about Westminster, I don't know about any of the others.
I would, I would look in Sykesville, Westminster, Frederick.
But that might be useful, you know, to look at.
I, I think you're right.
I can reach out and find, I know in Carroll County, they don't, now again, you know, currently theirs and they don't have it, but I can look at municipalities, larger municipalities maybe.
But I think that's what we did do, and we, all of them had existing uses, not exempt, like they said, this is what is allowed, and so that's what I think we copied it off of, I don't think they had. I don't believe it was the other way around, I'm not saying we shouldn't go down that road, I'm just saying, I think that we did do that at one point already.
And I think we discussed doing it, non-permitted uses. We, we went round and round about that one.
We'll just do one more little review and then.
Quickie look.
Make a decision.
Yeah. Alright, so um, at this time, I, you know, since we have some time, if it's agreeable to all the other commission members, um, if anyone has another comment or anything that we've discussed, yes, Victor? Absolutely.
So, I'll try to go back through in a orderly fashion, the way you guys went through it, back to the, the beginning, but there's a couple, a couple things, um, with respect to the open space, the ten percent, and trying to determine if it's commercial or residential, it's a mixed-use project, so it's really not going to say this is a residential area, this is commercial, you may have some retail that has townhouses next to it, and so it's not, it's not as easy to chop up an area and say this is commercial and this is retail, I don't have a problem with it being applied to the project, but it's not going to be as simple as saying we need this much in commercial or residential, because it'll be it'll be a mixed use, so there won't, there won't be specific, easy-to-tell boundaries on portions of the project, portions of it will be easy, this is all residential over here, but where they blend in the middle, you know, around Center Street, areas like that, there will be some residential planned or proposed, and there will be non-residential, so having it across the board is, is fine, but you can't, it's, you're not gonna be able to say, we need to make sure that ten percent of the commercial has it and ten percent of the residential has it, it's not going to be that easy to determine. So I would just say that when you're, when we're talking about.
Are you saying you're preferring a percentage across the board, whether it's residential or commercial, is that what you just said?
Yes, but for the whole project, as opposed to
Right.
if you go down to the micro level of saying, hey, there's twenty-five, using the ratios in here, twenty-five percent is commercial, is there twenty-five percent opens, I mean, is there ten percent in that twenty-five? It's not gonna work that way.
Right.
There'll be more in the residential, because it's more appropriate
Right, okay.
but it'll be ten percent.
Alright, that's fine, you want it across the board, that's fine.
Yeah, so at the micro level, it can't be done.
That's fine.
So much.
Okay, I see that.
Okay, so the next one is, this is, this is the one that's probably, this is a deal killer, and this is the net developable acreage. And that has to change, or this project doesn't go through, because nowhere does, so when, when I, in every other jurisdiction I go to, net developable acreages, I take, let's say I have a ten-acre parcel, I take out what I can't develop, floodplain, or buffers on a stream valley, something like that, the environmental envelope. I don't take out streets, that is a development, I am developing that, to take that out of net developable acreage, stormwater management, I am developing, if it's in an R P A or a protected area, that's not counted, but to take that out of the developable acreage in order to determine all these other ratios, that's a deal killer, that, that doesn't work at all. It has to be based on usable area, 'cause I'm developing all of the usable area, whether it's a park, an open space, a house, street, stormwater management, but it can't be based on just the area used just for the buildings, taking out streets and all, that, that, that will, that will absolutely gut this project and any other project, net, net developable acreage under those standards is not workable.
Tony, didn't we run into that issue with another project, though? I wasn't it too long ago?
On the east side of town.
Yes, yep, and there was.
We had a client that was in this.
Brittany Manor.
But that was part of the, the issue, which was, I mean, this isn't the first time we've heard, but that's a general, everywhere has that standard.
Yeah, so Victor, what are you contesting that that apply to, that net developable acreage? The open space or something else?
No, the project. You have, you, not only, and later on in there, you put a residential density cap for some reason.
So you're talking about the density cap?
No, I'm talking about the whole project. You're telling me
Usable.
that I'm gonna, you're gonna base all of my decisions on a net usable acreage, but I'm developing all the spaces that you're taking out, why would it be based on a space less than that?
But what is being based on that, is what I'm asking.
Should be everything that's developable. If it's not in an environmental area.
Besides net developable acreage, what else are you talking about?
You said streets were included, were taken out of net usable acreage, correct?
Okay, but what, where are you going with that, what, besides net developable acreage, what are you saying that that's gonna kill the project?
What difference?
What in the ordinance is based off?
You take the acreage down, so, so for example, if, if I had a hundred acres, and you said my net usable acreage is, is ten, is sixty acres, now I'm doing ten percent of sixty. Why is that?
Less for you, for open space?
I'm, but you've taken away all the things that should count in the first place, you've taken my density away, you've taken all these things away, it should be based on usable area. That's all.
But that would make the number bigger.
Right.
It does?
I'm just, you asked me how it changes numbers, that's one of the areas, density's the biggest one, and, and the ratio of seventy-five to twenty-five in land area, that'll all change when you take that down to that area. When you have net usable acreage, it changes everything.
Amount he can build, right?
It's the amount I can build.
The amount he can build, is what he's talking.
But, but under your, under your calculation, you're deducting something that I built, the roads. Why would that be taken out of my, my usable area?
Again, that helps you with open space.
Fine, take open space, but all the density is gone, the ratios change, I'm gonna wanna build no roads, I'm gonna wanna build as little stormwater management under this, it shouldn't be a disincentive to creating public works. That's what this is, you've taken the public works out of the usable space. Nobody else, no one else uses this standard, nowhere, this is just a code word for less density.
It's okay, but I'm still lost in what else besides net developable, I mean, base density, besides that.
Just take base density.
How does it kill you?
Just take base density.
Okay.
You've already limited it, you've already put a cap, and now you're trying to take away the, the rest of the area that I'm gonna develop to create even less density, it's just a code word for no more density. It's a way to, it's an artificial way to limit more density. I'm telling you, that's a killer, right? Because I have to create density in order to create revenue on a project to support commercial uses.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Because we didn't actually, I, I missed this when we were going through it, um, yeah, I don't know where that seven-unit limit came from.
I don't either.
So if there wasn't that limit, if there were, if you could have more units than seven, would that make up for any of this?
It absolutely does from a math perspective, but it also doesn't make I'm not smart enough right now to tell you every implication that's gonna come out of net usable acreage, but I know that no one uses that standard anywhere, okay? There shouldn't be a density cap, the, the site's gonna have or have not, you know, enough density, especially with building heights, open space, anything else.
I mean, there's already limits because of that, right?
But, but why, why would I be, you're penalizing me for putting in, in improvements by taking it out of my calculable area. I shouldn't be penalized for putting in streets, that's what you're, that's what this does.
We've had this in other developments, and net developable acreage is already defined in under ninety-eight twenty-three, so the question is.
And no, there is no development in town.
Okay.
You say that, but there's no development in town, we're talking about trying to promote this development, right?
There has been development in town.
This Brittany Manor took ten years to get to.
That was because of water, not because, not because.
But there is no development in town, okay? This is not some, I'm not making this up so I can get eight thousand houses, I, as I told you, and you guys probably read my email, if we developed this, the thing that your design consultants said for that part of town, that'd be great, that's a good vision, that's a nice project, they did a good job, we're not looking to put in nine thousand houses, but this prevents that. This automatically prevents that. It can't be done.
Right, so you have net developable acreage already defined, we've already applied it. Question is the base density. The seven was put in there based on what they had suggested, six, maybe six hundred units on the Beck property, all of Beck property. And it was just the given number, if that's not the correct number, then maybe adjust that base density number, but the base density number is there just to put a cap on it, so he doesn't try to put in eight thousand units, not saying he would, but.
Can't.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine.
No, but you and I've had this conversation. You want that in there to limit density, that shouldn't, you're trying to prevent us from doing something, we're supposed to be working together to create something.
I'm not dictating that number, I'm just saying.
You dictated it by installing seven units per acre, that was never part of anybody's conversation, then you put it in there, it also never said net developable acreage, that was never in this, that was put in by you. So those two things came in afterwards, after all of the conversations that were done here, that was not part of that, so that, net developable acreage is now something that we have to deal with, why? Again, you're penalizing us, whether it's been used in another zone in the, in the town is irrelevant, on this zone, on this project, it will not work, that's all I'm telling. That's all I'm telling you. You have the choice to include it or not include it. I'm just telling you what won't work. That doesn't work. No one should be penalized for putting in public works. That's what this does.
So let me just ask this. What density, you want no density cap at all throughout the MXD?
Listen, there's a reasonable, there's a reasonable density. If there was a density cap, we could figure that one out.
Right.
However, I don't believe it's needed because of all of the standards already. The fact that you have, for example, height limits, right? You have a ratio of 25 to 75, okay? You're gonna have open space requirements. You have parking requirements. I can tell you right now, the parking requirements are gonna limit everything in here anyways.
So, so let's, let's deal with a different developer than you.
Yeah.
Okay? And a developer wants a density that the planning commission does not agree with. And the planning commission says, "Don't like the density, forget it." Developer says, "Screw you. I'm gonna proceed with my site plan. I'm gonna have you disapprove it and I'm gonna take you to court." Because you don't have any limitation in your ordinance. What you're demanding as a planning commission, that I reduce my density, is not, has no basis in law. What's my response to that if I'm defending the town?
Well, you just used it in a vacuum, right?
No, no.
Yeah, you used it in a vacuum without any other-
This is real.
But there are, there are other development standards.
Just gave you an exact hypothetical, actually.
I still have to come in and have a design based on the standards that you have.
Sure.
I don't get to put in a 60-story building and say, "You don't have a density cap, so I can have 300 units."
Right, well, that's true.
That's make believe, right? There are design standards. I'm not putting in structured parking. I'm not putting in underground parking, you know, those kind of things. There's already something, if you wanna put a density cap, be my guest. There's some number that's a reasonable. To put it at the top of the townhouse, the R7, in the, in the mixed-use zone, doesn't make any sense. Especially with this developable acreage, or developable area. But I, I, I'm not saying there's going to be an 800. If they're want, if you wanna put a cap, I'm sure there's a reasonable cap that can be figured out. You can use the same cap that they used in the town, uh, the, um, vision plan, right? There's, there's somewhere in there. And that was just for the western part. It wasn't for the whole site. But, but the net developable acreage is not gonna work. Or the, yeah, net developable acreage just doesn't work. But if you wanna have a development cap, it's fine, but it's, that's still gotta change with the acreage.
Well, it might be, all I'm gonna suggest is it may be helpful, and we've got time, you know, between now and whenever, if, if one comes to you, you do tell.
Well, it's in, it's in your vision plan already.
Okay.
The one thing I haven't, you know, I haven't understood about this process is, and this rewrite, is you guys spent a lot of money on a, a study that, that some of the, a lot of the elements are being ignored. And they're already there. They made a recommendation on what the density should be. What type of uses should be in this. What type of design should be in this. They made all those recommendations. This does not reflect most of those recommendations. This is a rewrite, a change from that.
So one comment to that also is, if you look at R3 district, maximum density, a maximum of three dwelling units per net developable acreage shall be permitted. That's already in your code. It's just following exactly the language that's in there. Now, what that number should be, you know, can be up, you know, can be modified, but-
Well, I mean, Victor's right that this is a mixed use. So it is, so it is-
It's different.
Should be more dense, I mean, it should be denser than R3.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I agree with that. Because the idea is you kind of have more, more units, but then you have these other, you know, your commercial and your, your walking paths and your open space. But yeah, I mean, I, I agree. It's, I don't think it should be limited to that density.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. We actually agreed on something.
So, uh, without going on and on about that. So the other question I had with respect to that is, you know, what constitutes open space? What is unimproved green space? So in, in, in an area like this, and this may be something that, you know, you guys have to look at for the next 30 days, is there's going to be less untouched space and more touched open space. So more of that type of element needs to be counted towards it. So just by way of example, there may be a pocket park that has, you know, a walkway around it. And in the middle, there's a placed playground or something like that. That's all improved area as opposed to untouched green grass. But that should all count because that's more appropriate for an MXD than it is for, you know-
Well, that, that would count.
That everyone understands. It's not going to be, you know, like soccer fields in the middle of the town center-
No, no, no. I don't think that we're-
Where we're not touching it.
That's more, that's more in line of our vision, I think, what you just-
The vision is exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. So the market analysis, this was on the page four. So we can do our market analysis and we can bring it in. But you guys have already actually done the market analysis. That is what the vision plan include, it's a very detailed market analysis. It's, and it's pretty, pretty about 90% on of what we found exactly. So you already have your own market analysis. Now, I don't know if you wanna make that something that you can rely on for a limited period of time, or it's, but, you know, you had addressed the concept of, "Well, are we gonna skew a market analysis to our needs?" We may, but we probably won't because it doesn't help me to build something that I made up, right? So I may bring in a market analysis.
Right, I mean, you're gonna redo, I mean, I know we have the plan, but you're probably gonna do something anyway.
We will definitely do something. We've already done it. But we'll do it again. We'll update it and we'll bring those in.
Yeah.
But you do, I just wanna point out, you do have that-
Right, right.
Already. Your, your consultant said, "Hey, over the next 20 years?" Yep, this is how it should be. This is the amount of space, this is the amount of retail space you should develop and that this town can actually support. So that already exists. So that kinda goes to some of the language where I'm like, "Why do we have to justify some of these things if your consultant already justified some of these things?" Just something to throw out there. And then, and how detailed you want it to be? You know, at one point, someone said executive summary. Well, I can say, yeah, we need, we need 160,000 and we need 300 houses. But really, it's how detailed, we can provide you with the report. Is that part of the pattern book? Or is that just backed up for people to look at when they're looking at the pattern book? Just something to consider on that. All right, so this one, the setbacks. So I don't have a problem with, like, downtown setbacks. And I don't have a problem with the standards of downtown, or creating standards for them. My comment was more based on, don't use a standard that's adjacent. For example, there's, there is single-family houses that are on the western side that will abut a portion of that. Those standards should not apply. Because, and I think it's said in there, like, adjacent, at one point, it was like adjacent, um, properties. And it was an older version of what, of what you guys had here. Existing standards next door should not apply. I don't mind standards, and, and you know, there was a couple of comments that, "I think you should do away with all standards." And I don't, totally agree with that. There should be some standards, but the, the old ones don't necessarily always apply to this. Setbacks are going to be different. I agree. Wide sidewalks, perfect idea, all those things. Those are, those are great town centers. But when you start to go out from that core, you have townhouses and singles. Your singles should be tighter to, you know, I'm gonna use Kentlands just because that's a, a different example. But they should be closer to the street. They're not going to be like the ones that are 60 years old or 50 years old right next door. They're going to be different.
Closer.
So that standard should be just for the MXD. And that's why the pattern book's important, because you say, okay, as Tom was talking about, we have standards in the town, but we can get variances through the pattern book. You don't have to get a special exception to do it. It's just granted as part of the pattern book. That's generally how it's done everywhere else. So for example, Montgomery County, you do a preliminary plan. And if you have something like this, you do a site plan. And in the site plan, you create your standards for setbacks. And they say, "We are granting the variance because it helps us, because we save," it might be an environmental reason, it might be a street aesthetics reason, things like that. So you create them. So the base standards are fine as long as there's the ability to have a variance to create or to fulfill the goals of the MXD in the pattern book. Okay, so, uh, page five still, because I like to bore you. So is this a two-step process or is this not? So when I, when I was listening to it all, there's two, there's a couple of things going on. There's, there's the concept of design, and then there's the concept of the, the actual design plans, right? And Barney is the most qualified to look at the design plans. Where the pipes go and, you know, how much water's going through and those kind of things. And those aren't really the function of the planning commission, as you know. And that's what Tom was pointing out, that third part, the permit plans. So if it is just a two-step per, process that comes before the, the planning commission, that's, that's better. And, and I think if we make this concept plan and the pattern book basically the same thing-
Yep, that's what we're saying.
In some kind of nomenclature, that will work. Because we're gonna show you a, a color rendering of a nice plan that has bubbles. And we're all gonna sit down and say, "That looks cool. Let's, let's get a little bit more design." And then we'll start to work on the pattern book, and that'll all be one phase. And so when we go from that high level down to, we start to see some neighborhoods and we start to talk about, these are, you know, we wanna put retail here, 40,000 square feet. We wanna put 200 or 22 houses, or whatever it is. That'll get there. And that's all in the concept and pattern book. And then when we do the preliminary plan, that's what you guys call that, that, that'll show lot lines and that'll show one, or two-dimensional stormwater management pipes and things like that. So that we know where everything kinda lays out. And that, to me, is a reasonable process, is, is we have it, you know, sort of bunched in like that. But I'd also like to eliminate the special exceptions, except for something that really is a special exception. I don't have any plans right now on a hotel, but your own consultant said they should build a hotel here. And I'm not really sure what the objection is, is to hotels and making a special exception. Especially since, honestly, every person I've talked to is like, "Are you gonna build some meeting space?" Like, I, I'm not going to, but if we had a hotel, you could have some meeting space. I would just suggest that that become a permitted use. I don't have anything to do with the fraternities or clubs or the other stuff, but, um, all right. Let's see. This is, uh, let's see. Pattern book, and then we got two, um-
Now, is the pattern book along with the concept plan and the charrette gonna happen on the same?
So I, my comment before was about the charrette. I don't know why a charrette would be necessary, you know?
Public involvement, I guess.
Well, that's the funny part here, is all of these are public hearings and people don't come. And then someone says, "Well, we have to have a charrette," and then nobody comes. And then they say, "Oh, we're gonna have another public hearing." It's kind of a circular thing. People are given a chance to see it, and then that's gotta be it. There can't, there has to be some surety in the timeline and process. I don't mind a charrette. It might be early, it might be after we have our first level look at it. But I don't know that it should be a requirement. Because if nobody shows up, why should there be other steps? I mean, generally, people show up when they wanna complain. They don't show up when they're trying to support things. And so if they're not showing up, it's usually because they're okay with what they're seeing. Not always, but that's generally my, been my, you know, experience presenting. And my brother actually has to do it, but presenting in front of the board and things like that. So I just don't wanna have an endless series of public hearings and charrettes and public things when it's all been out there. It's always available. And all, you know, if 50 people come to a public hearing and they wanna work on a charrette, no problem. I think that's a great idea. Clearly, there's some interest. But if one person comes and it's Carl, and he and I are having sandwiches together afterwards, I don't know that we need to do it. So I just don't think it should be a requirement. So on page seven, item five, it was, and this is page seven of the recent version. It said amendments to the concept plans. And we, and you guys talked about it a little bit. So I, I just, I, I put an asterisk on two of them, A and C. A change in use and changes in the orientation. So we're gonna create that pattern book and we're gonna create a, you know, a preliminary plan that shows you the buildings. And it's, it may say retail use, or it may just say general commercial use. I'm not sure yet what we'll get to. But I think it should be a material change of use. Meaning, if something goes from commercial to residential, I can understand that. But if it goes from, I, I don't know the level of uses of how deep we want to, you know, how we're gonna label that yet. If it's general commercial and it goes to, I'm just gonna say industrial, even though I don't think industrial's allowed here. But that's a big change. I get that. But if it's a karate studio to a dance studio, even though that's a change in use, it's not really a change in use. So I guess, I think we should just pay a little attention to whether it's a material change or if there's something in the ordinance already that talks about the difference between those two. And then, and the other one is changes in the orientation or location of buildings or parking areas. So the orientation, I understand, because if you're turning things, I get that. But some buildings may change. You may have one building that's got a square end that turns, we end up rounding out the cap. The parking area, it may have, it may be the same number of spaces, but because of stormwater management, we moved it a little bit. The last thing we wanna do is come back to the planning commission on things like that. So again, I would say is if there's some material level that, you know, fundamentally changes what was presented in the pattern book, I get that. But if it's really just a mechanical thing, the things that Barney and John, you know, are generally responsible for anyways, I'm not sure that that, I don't think it should raise to the level of coming back.
Well, again, that's my question, is like you're saying, ultimately, when the site plan for that specific pad site comes in, it's gonna be going through that process. You're not just getting a blanket, build whatever you wanna build. You're still gonna have to come through for each building that you're putting in, coming through the planning commission for their approval of that, what the lot is, what the use is. So, I mean, that's all gonna come through during that process.
Is that the, the second step, the preliminary plan you're talking about? Or the third step, the site plan?
That's the second.
Well, it'd be the second.
Second.
Ultimately, it's the second one.
But, but as we've seen, you know, like, stormwater management sometimes changes how, you know-
Well, standards change. So if it's gonna be a 10-year build-out, hell, the, the, the standards might change for stormwater management. So if you have X amount, I mean, look at Brittany Manor, that's a prime example. You know, regulations have changed from when it was first subdivided and then built on. So each one of those lots, when it comes in, is getting scrutinized by the town planning commission and, and staff for what, to make sure it meets the code. So, I mean, I think that's still gonna be under scrutiny by us and by the planning commission at some point.
You say that, but there has to be some vested rights, right? You can't, if, if, if you approve a site plan, which is called step two, if you approve that preliminary plan and you say that we're, we comply with stormwater management, we have to have a timeframe where that all complies. For example, again, Montgomery County, once you get your preliminary plan approved, it's, it's valid for 60 months, five years. You don't, if the standard changes two days later, you don't come in. You've complied with it at the time. And it needs to stay that way. Otherwise, we, we will never get to an approved plan because the standards are always changing and so, we would always be coming back, "Hey, they're gonna change tomorrow, so we know that we need to do this."
So your concept plan then ultimately will show-
Not the concept plan, second step, so the-
The preliminary.
The site development plan, you're, I'm sorry, your preliminary plan.
The confusion is because of the town code, county code. It really, what Victor's saying is there is a concept sketch plan, pattern book, which, here's the proposed development for this block of the site. It is two-dimensional line and as the pattern book's showing, street, skate band. Then you move into the concept plan, which is defined in the town code, which gives integrating landscape design, stormwater management.
But that's called preliminary plan in here.
Yeah, but the town code calls it concept plan. Yeah, but the town code calls it concept plan. And that's why I'm thinking, Tom, is that please give some consideration so that this confusion doesn't occur in it. Because the concept plan comes through the planning commission, the planning commission approves it hopefully, and then you go, you're basically vested in what your program is. You then move to your final site plan or your sort of, so that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, that's true, because-
Right.
...concept plan, lots going on, it's very critical. There's, you know, the FBO test at that time, there's a water allocation. And I don't think that the plan, the pattern book phase, if I can call it that, is meant to be that.
Right, no.
It's not the same as the concept.
Right, no.
So.
Yeah, and so that you don't have to change the rest of your code, but just the, in your terminology, concepts, sketch plan denotes, here's what our program is for this element of the site. Now, here's how we wanna lay it out. Here's our mix of use and everything that, along with the pattern book. But then the planning commission then can hopefully get to an agreement with the developer that then allows him to move into our plan, to move into the process that the town has for the plan and a site plan.
It's almost like a pre-concept. It's kinda like, this is our proposal, this is what-
Yes.
Yeah, something like that, I mean.
It's kinda like your overview. It's the thirty thousand foot view, not the-
Well, it'll have two parts to it because of the pattern book. But yeah, I mean, I think if you don't use the term sketch plan already in the town, that's probably a better label. Sketch plan and pattern book go together, which gives you a conceptual idea of this project.
And you might, I'm sorry, and you might come in with the pattern book and have the buildings a certain way, but then when you get to the next part, when you're showing us the plans, it might be different. You don't have to get approval for that, because it's gonna be, because of something that's happened.
Well, yes and no. So, and John, as John was pointing out, when we come in with that second phase, which is actually called concept plan, but is referred to as preliminary plan in here, those are what I call just site plans.
Okay.
Those will say where we're gonna put it. We should know our, a lot of our development plans at that, at that point.
Right, and just to clarify, once we approve that, that's what you were talking about? That once we approve that, you don't want us to go and change it, which, you're talking about that second-
Once that's approved, that should be vested.
Right, and that, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
At least for a certain period of time.
For some period of time, if you don't build it with, yeah.
Right, and I don't know if we have, I don't think ours is five years. I think it's like two, is it, or twenty-four months? But, but we do have that.
Okay.
So, so then, this that we were talking about in terms of these changes, number five, A and C, you were concerned about, that would be if it were a change to the, what we're calling concept, right here. So I would be okay with material changes.
Yeah, in some level, I think there has to be some distinction there. Yeah, yeah, I agree. Because no one wants to come back here and say, "Hey, you know, we moved this window from here to here."
Yeah, no.
So, I don't, I don't have any problem with that.
No.
Um, okay, let's see. So, the next thing was, in that section, let's see, it's page nine of thirteen. B six. "I understand the encouraged development." It's the second part of the sentence that makes it sound a little bit more like it's being required. It's "and that creates a community." I don't know, maybe it's just my, my own paranoia, but just so you know, live-work generally does not, does not work in very many places. There is very few places I've seen that it does work. So, it should be encouraged, I have no problem with that. It's just as long as the expectation is it's unlikely that it's gonna work unless you find... There could be a single users, you know, one or two people that do that.
Yeah, Arlington, it works in Arlington.
Arlington's a great example of it. You know, you have a lot of people that can walk to everything there. Okay, so-
So I guess your, if possible, you wanted was just for the live-work part, is that?
Yes, yeah, because I, you know, supporting artistic and cultural things, all those things are-
That's fine, so if it was, okay, if it ended at entity, you-
Yeah.
So then, okay, so then I would think the, and, and it, if possible, creates- I think if possible, needs to be clearly linked to the live-work. Because I thought, I thought before the whole thing is you were saying if possible, you were just talking-
No, just the live-work.
And if possible, that creates a community.
Yeah, that I think would be fine, I mean, or whatever.
Um, okay, so the permitted uses and the prohibited uses and the special exception, I'll just link them all together. It is my opinion that, you know, there should be, if you wanna do a list, it should be exhaustive. In other words, there, if you allow uses in all these other zones, the MXD should not be more limited, it should be, it should have more uses. It should be a combination of all these other zones together, so that the flexibility is there. It shouldn't have less uses than, for example, CC or something like that. There shouldn't be a pick-out. The MXD is intended to have more diverse uses.
Yeah, but I don't think we want gas stations, because there's people living.
But that's why you can see some easily prohibited things. I think it's a lot easier to say-
I think so too.
"I don't want a gas station." You already have a list of prohibited uses in the town anyways, adult bookstores, things like that. "We don't want any more gun stores," or whatever it is. I think it's easier, my opinion. One way or another, I think if you list them out, make sure it's an exhaustive list that clearly takes multiple zones and puts them together. Or if you allow them, if you say everything's permitted except for these, you know, certain things that clearly are not intended, that's fine. But I just think that MXD intends to have a lot of uses.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna revisit that one, we're gonna go-
Is there an ordinance that you've found particularly good that you might recommend us?
You know, I, we did provide some before, and the Maryland state rep who came in, he was the one that, actually, I was always on the permitted use track, and he was the one that said, "Don't need us, just tell us what you don't want, or just say what you don't want." So he was, he was different. But I think, I can pull it up, but Frederick definitely has one. I don't think, I think Sykesville did a format, but it was a, it was a kinda truncated... They have a pattern book and they have some other-
Might be part of their, might be part of their Warfield project, I'm not sure.
Might be. I can, I can look up some things and get you some. But I know that, because I spent time with that guy, the state rep, and he was adamant that you don't need that kinda format. I don't, you know, he doesn't live here, so he doesn't know the tenor of how people feel about it, but that's how they approach it.
Yeah, and we also, I'm sorry, there are also resources through the, um, planning, Maryland Planning Commissioners Conference, or on the website that we can use and we'll talk, I'll talk to them. I think it was Chuck Boyde he talked to, so we can talk, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he's a good guy, he's got a lot of energy.
A lot.
Um, alright, so then the next thing would be that item C, which is the, I'm sorry, not item C. It's the, it's the size of the twenty-five thousand, sixty-five thousand, and I'll explain my comment as well. So, just so you understand, your own, your consultant did a report, and they also said, "There needs to be an anchor here." Everything we've ever looked at, every market guy we've looked at, every personal developer that's looked at it, says, "There has to be an anchor here to draw people off the street." We want them coming off of twenty-seven, the twenty-four thousand cars that pass by every day, coming in. Although I'd love to say I could create a lot of twenty-five thousand square foot anchors, it's not gonna happen. I think you should have an exception, even if it's just for one. And I understand the worry that it's a big box, no one wants to do that. And the way to limit it is maybe just say you can have one use between twenty-five and sixty-five, and everything else is under twenty-five. But I can tell you, I guarantee you, I'm gonna come in here, or someone's gonna come in here with an anchor in order to make this work. It has to be that way. And I'm not making it up, your own consultant did the same market study to determine that. So, instead of creating a barrier to that, which is what's in here, making me prove all of these things, we already know it's coming. And we already know that the market study says it should be there. I think maybe you should exempt one use of the twenty-five to sixty-five, and maybe no other uses, if you only wanna have one use, so that it's not a big box. You can have one use from twenty-five to sixty-five, everything else has to be under twenty-five. I just, I think that's a practical way to look at it, and it's a realistic way. Because I guarantee you, there's gonna be an anchor, whether it's me or anyone else that brings, you know, this site in. Because it's, I mean, the whole site is, is it ninety acres? Been working on it so long, I don't even remember. I mean, it's fifty acres, forty acres on one side, right? That's, you can't bring, you know, you need some mass. It doesn't have to be a hundred and twenty thousand square foot big, you know, Best Buy store, but it probably is a fifty thousand square foot Harris Teeter, or, you know, something along those lines. Or, you know, if Trader Joe's wanted to be here, I wouldn't need it, but there aren't enough people for Trader Joe's.
Right.
And that's the reality of it.
And they're, they do a radius to, around their stores, don't they? Like, if there's a Trader Joe's here, there's like thirty or forty five-
Not to come here, because they'd get all the people from Westminster, all the people from Frederick.
Right, I understand that, but-
It's like, what, Gaithersburg?
And that's within their radius, that's why they can't build-
Most people are driving from here to Gaithersburg.
Doesn't make sense.
I'd put a Trader Joe's on every project I could, if they were willing, I'd give them free rent if they were willing to do it, but, you know, only certain people are gonna come in. So, I just think, if, you know, for you guys to discuss, if you can make it at least, knowing that there's gonna be one use between that twenty-five and sixty-five, and then everything else could be below, I think that's a more reasonable approach, knowing what we're gonna do.
And you're, and you're saying over the whole development, over the whole acreage?
Uh, just, you know, just to lay it out there, the whole Beck property, to me, the west side will have, is gonna be true mixed use. The east side is gonna be residential, unless I find, and something I would like to work with, maybe with Barney, we may find an industrial user for the far east side that ties in with the industrial park already. But otherwise, I would anticipate most of the east side would be residential as well, or just residential. So this is really, when I'm talking about the mixed uses, it's really just gonna be the west side.
The west side.
But I know you're smiling, because you don't want too much housing, but, and, you know, you're, the, um... The consultant says, even just for the commercial that you have here, you need another three thousand summer house.
They did, they did.
I'm not intending to bring three thousand houses, but there is a huge gap between the commercial and what can sustain the commercial, and the amount of residential units here. And even if I were to develop the living hell out of this site, I still wouldn't bring it into any near, anywhere near balance. That's not our intention, but there is going to be, you know, that's what we're gonna look at. When I look at the east side, I think about townhouses and singles. And when I look at the west side, I think some singles to border the existing singles, towns, and some multifamily, because there's, you know, there's no product in that price range that's been built in the last thirty years for twenty-two-year-olds and twenty-five-year-olds to stay in town and do that kinda thing, so.
What price range are you talking about, then, is my question, for those type of houses perimeter, you know, around the perimeter there?
You know, here's the hard thing about that, John. Standing here today, you know, we won't put a shovel in the ground for four years. In four years, we might be in the middle of a recession, or in four years, we might be in the longest economic expansion in, you know, modern history.
Yeah, you can't, you can't determine it right now.
I mean, if you look around right now, you know, prices are, there's no supply, right? If I were to put, if I had a subdivision in the middle right now, and I could build townhouses right in the middle of that area, I probably could charge anything I wanted. But I don't think that's what's gonna, I don't think that's where we're gonna be when this stuff comes out. But, but in the overall market, it will be a project that mostly contains first-time independent livers, you know, the younger kids, first-time buyers and second-time buyers. I doubt it will be upscale housing in that kinda format. There'll be nice units, but it won't be seven hundred thousand dollar units in the middle of town. It won't be that kinda, you know, I know you guys have more expensive housing around the area, but I think it's more related to-
Yeah, we need some lower, we have enough expensive housing, yes.
I think it's really related to people that wanna live in that area, wanna walk, you know, and they don't want three thousand square feet. Even the singles will probably be small lot, singles and smaller units, but they'll have a yard, things like that, so. So, that was the use, right, twenty-five?
Yes, so we're gonna be working on that.
Yep. I made little sad faces on here. Okay, so, so on the building height, no structure shall exceed forty feet in height or a maximum of three stories. From a commercial standpoint, that's no problem. If we do two-story product, it'll be the kind where you have retail on the bottom, and it would be probably like service-oriented, whether it's a dentist or insurance guy, or sometimes dance studios, things like that. To me, that is probably what this market fills, and I think that says that in that report as well. But, the one thing that we have seen in the market is four-story townhouses, urban townhouses, that have a fourth floor that are like, about, not back, it's like patios, like-
Yes.
Rooftop stuff.
One-loud.
One-level, yeah, it's, they're pretty cool, and they're smaller, they're like sixteen feet, but they're four levels. And they are in these town center projects, and they are, they are, they're gone. And I would not live there, it's not my style. I'm probably too, you know, old for that, but it's very popular. So, I think the height, I think removing the stories, if you want that kinda product, I think removing the stories would be, would be appropriate. That's my guess, just because the square, the height is more important. And those don't, I don't think they get to, I don't think they get to forty feet.
I don't think so either.
I could check it, but I just wanna throw that out.
So what's this top floor?
It's a rooftop deck.
It's a rooftop deck.
So it's actually three stories of living, and then it's open?
Well, they, sometimes, you actually have some structure up there, because you don't walk up a ladder, you actually come up a stair and come out. So there is some structure out there, and then there's some, so it's made, let's say it's half-structure.
So it's considered sort of a porch slash deck type thing?
No, they call it a rooftop deck.
They call it a rooftop deck, but there has to be structure there, because that's how you ingress, egress out of there. So it ends up being called four stories. So, again, doesn't have to be built here, but I would say, you know, it's something to consider when we talk about heights and floors.
As long as you don't use the colors they're using in one-loud, and I'm fine with it.
Uh, is that the palette of pinks and greens?
No, it's the grays, the bright ones.
Well, every new home and every mild home I go into has gray and white and silver and, you know?
I'm talking about the outside.
Um, alright, so, I already cried about the suburban density cap, so we don't have to talk about that. That was item G.
What is the density cap that you think it should be?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two per acre. I mean, realistically, what is, you think is-
Well, I, yeah, I think, I think if you take, even if you took just the average of what the, what's in the report, I think they used, I think their total number was two ninety to four twenty, and that was on, I forget what the acreage is there. Is it forty acres on that side?
Same on the side of the road.
Western side, yes.
Residente Bureau, one hundred ninety to four.
Well, that, one ninety's actually a typo. If you add everything that they actually put, it's two ninety.
Oh yeah, now, now it's right here.
Yeah, so it's two ninety to four hundred, so six ninety, so it's three hundred forty-five, divided by whatever that acreage is, which is, I don't know what it is. I think it's thirty-nine, maybe forty acres, but that's closer to like ten, ten an acre. I think, and again, I'm not making it up, I'm just saying, that's what's in that report, what I think is a reasonable cap. So I think somewhere in that range would be the right number. Let's see if I wind about anything else in here. Yes, okay, so, item K, which is the next page, twelve. So this was added in with the new standards. The last few lines of item K, it says, "Buildings with commercial, townhomes and/or apartments that abut an existing residential district must maintain a fifty-foot yard buffer." So I'm not, I'm not sure why that is. What's, what's the point of the fifty, I mean, I don't, this doesn't work, it's a town zone. It's intended to be developed more densely and with different standards. So, I'm not sure why there's a buffer between one to the other.
I can answer that. I think most all that, we're only talking about the south side of the property, right? Where it abuts residential.
The single families.
Single families, and they're single families. So if you notice on here, it doesn't say single families. So if you put single families there, you don't need the fifty-yard buffer. That was the intent. If you're doing something, a higher density or a commercial, something that's different than what they have-
Yeah.
-existing, then you would need... The idea was to create a buffer, so somebody who's been living there for a long time has never had something right there, all of a sudden, they have a commercial building or, you know, a big apartment building right next to them. The idea was put a fifty-foot buffer for that, but if you put a single family, you wouldn't necessarily need the buffer.
Okay, so is that standard, is there a fifty-foot yard buffer standard between singles and towns and any other zone?
No, because we don't, we, we, there is no-
There is buffers, like between an industrial district to residential or something.
Yeah, so, I would say that I, you know, last thing you wanna do is put an apartment building next to those singles, right next.
Right.
But I'm not sure that I see the difference, or the reason to have a fifty-yard, fifty-foot buffer for a townhouse. There, I mean, it's, it is downtown, it is a transition, it would be a reasonable transition. I'm not saying that that's exactly what we're doing, but, I mean, if you look at their design, there are parts where they do have towns next to singles, and it's a reason- and it's a reasonable transition to go from a downtown single to a downtown town, to, to apartments, that is, that, that.
That's the progression, and that makes sense. It does make sense, because we have neighborhood professional as a buffer. Between neighborhood professional, which is somewhat commercial, doctor's office, whatever, and, and residential. So, townhouse is residential.
Yeah.
I think that has a fifty-foot buffer between.
I don't think it says fifty foot, does it?
I thought it was for.
I'll check, because I'm going to be looking at the other zone.
Residential, it's supposed to provide a fifty-foot buffer.
What's the regular buffer between, um, I can't remember, but there's only.
What's the buffer between CC and residential, is it fifty?
Technically, there's not supposed to be, but I'm going to be working on that too.
Well, there, I mean, that's why I'm wondering why we're creating one.
No, no, there, there's, there's not supposed to be CC bordering residential.
Oh, I see, I got you.
So I'm sure there's a buffer in there, it's just when they changed, um, when they created neighborhood professional, I think they forgot to amend, um, something else, but I wasn't here then. Forgetting about it.
And the, the last thing I would say is, at, in order for us to, and anybody, to develop this site, the most important thing is going to be the surety of what we can do. And, so, for example, you, you know, if it says it's a permitted use, then we're going to expect that it's a permitted use, so, you know, to, to answer the questions, well, if we write it in there, are they going to, yes. That's the whole point of why we want this document to read, it's not what it reads. We want the APFO to last for a certain period of time, we want the standards to be applied for a certain, you can't develop without surety, because we're not talking about, you know, a million dollars, we're talking about seventy-five to a hundred million dollars. And if somebody in the town decides, you know, there's a new planning commission, and we no longer like this, we can't, we can't have that where it's just taken away. There has to be some vested rights to develop a project in order for it to happen. In other jurisdictions, they create developer rights and responsibilities agreements, which are generally good agreements if you do them correctly. And it says, if you guys do this, and you make sure you take care of all these things, then you can do your development. And I would say that it's probably an important part of this kind of thing.
Developer rights and.
It's called a D R R A, but it's a developer rights and responsibilities agreement. And the town says, we're not going to take away your rights, and you're not going to do something different, we're all going to work together, and here's the standards by what, and that can be done as part of the pattern book, like a phase one of the pattern book, and it could be a, a, you know, phase two as part of the, what, what you refer to as a preliminary plan, but I think is the town, is the concept plan, and it can be signed and agreed to, and all of those things can be in there. But that kind of vesting is important for a project like this.
Do you think it needs to be in the regulations here, or that it's just part of, that just as we attach it to being part of the, the, um.
I would defer to Tom on that, but I would say it's probably good to spell it out in some form or fashion. Yeah, and it may not be like a twenty-page ordinance, it may be, hey, that it's going to be worked on, that it, some form of developer rights agreements has to be agreed upon as part of that phase. It may be referenced in here and then written a little more deeply in something else, but that kind of vesting is important for both parties.
Yeah, because this project, no matter who takes it on, I mean, we're looking at like a ten, ten to fifteen-year project.
It's a long-term build-out, right? I mean, even if, even if I wanted to build all of the units on the western side, which was, I think they said four hundred was the maximum.
Oh, we're, yeah.
They were talking about, you know, a probable, um, absorption of what, eighty-some-odd units a year? That's, that's, that's still five years just for that.
Right.
And that's, that's to absorb the units, we still have to develop the site.
Right.
You know, get the houses built and everything else, so it's a long, long-term project. And that's the one thing everyone should realize too, you know, it's not, even if we get everything approved, there's not going to be a new shopping center with six hundred houses around it tomorrow. It's going to take a long time to get to all of those things. Uh, but that developer rights and, you know, the D R A actually talks about that, because you can say, you could have seventy-five permits per year, or you can have this much allocation water per year. Um, that kind of thing, so, although we, we're okay with water, so. Uh, so that's it, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So much. Uh, anyone else this time?
For Tom, Perfect County, chapter one twenty-five, they have D R R A as part of their ordinance. Chapter was like, one twenty-five, I can give you this copy. They've used it on a number of their major developments.
That's Frederick City or County?
Anyone else, I have any questions, concerns, we have some homework. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you for coming out this evening, thank you all for being here. And, um, at this point in time, we're here, motion to adjourn.
Do I second it?
It's been moved and seconded, it, we adjourned the workshop, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you all.